I want to get on that because I want to take it instead. I want to get on that because I want to take it instead. I want to get on that because I want to take it instead. I want to get on that because I want to take it instead. I need more time. But that's only because you have so much like a pledge to God. But the change in heart, I think, is something that does. It's like, you know, there's a prayer that has to be said. Now that's a lot of friendship and that explains something else. That's interesting. You just go really, really into your door and you know, and you have a sound.
That was actually, that was amazing.
Because there, you know, it's Japanese. That's exactly what I'm saying. She gets that. You get a lot of shelter and something. She has some insurance. But I respect my mom.
Oh.
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 Hi.
Yeah.
Oh.
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 Hi.
Yeah.
Oh.
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 Hi.
Yeah.
Oh.
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 Apologize, everybody, to everybody that is still here. We have no reportable action.
Councilman in closed session to do performance evaluation for the town manager. No reportable action will stay.
But, oops, is that supposed to be after I call the meeting to order? Now I'm calling this meeting to order of the Town Council of Loomis on February 11th at 6:31 PM. Carol, will you please take a roll call?
Councilmember Youngblood.
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright.
Here.
Councilmember Clark Cretz.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez.
Here.
Mayor Ring.
Here, and I just noticed we did not have an order. Are you supposed to pledge allegiance? I'm a little frazzled. I need about 30 seconds to take a deep breath. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, you want to do that?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's right.
You're going to share mics?
Yeah.
I have to.
All right, so next is the adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any problems with the agenda? No? Can I get a motion?
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or oppose. All right, it passes unanimously. Recognitions and proclamations, I believe we have none. Wes?
Okay.
All right. And then next up is presentation. So we have still standing guard. Wes, do you want to take that?
Absolutely. We have a presentation from the still standing guard individuals here tonight. I know councilmember, or excuse me, Mayor Protim Jan Clark Cretz asked for this tonight. I don't know if you have some words to introduce or not?
Absolutely. It is my pleasure tonight for the Town of Loomis to have a presentation made by the Still Standing Guard Committee, and Stuart Kegeta will be doing the presentation. This is an amazing group regarding our history, and this is Japanese American History Month for our town, and so we honor that very much and look forward to the presentation. And this is Stu Kegeta. And of course, you can maybe talk a little bit about you and your family in Loomis a little bit, and your Del Oro, and, you know.
Thank you very much for having us. We really appreciate it. My name is Stu Kegeta, as Jan said, and our family actually arrived in Loomis about 1907. So we have a long history here in Loomis. My parents owned a farm on King Road, just about a mile up from Auburn Folsom. I'm a born and bred Loomis kid and went to Placer Elementary, Del Oro High School, and Sierra College, and then eventually graduated from Sac State. And I also came back and taught my last 21 years at Del Oro High School, where I was a math teacher and also a coach of basketball and volleyball. So, are we ready for our slides? I don't have any good jokes.
Oh, okay.
I guess I could tell you something real quick, so it'll lead into what I'm going to be talking about. The people that arrived first, which would be like my grandparents' age, in the late 1800s and early 1900s, the bulk of the Japanese Americans that came to the United States were called isei, or first generation Japanese Americans. And then my parents would have been the nisei, or second generation, and my age group was the sansei, and it goes on from there. But that's some of the things that will be mentioned in the presentation. Still standing guard, we're just, we got a lot of supporters here. And we just got together as a group of volunteers to help tell about the history of the Loomis area and to inform people. We put on assemblies for Del Oro High School and also some evening presentations. So when we get to that point, we'd like to invite anyone here to come and watch some of the things that we've done. You were there last year.
I was, and I'll go again this year.
Okay. So still standing guard, this is Japanese American History Month in February, so we do like to keep that alive, make sure people understand the history, since there are a lot of Japanese Americans in this town. And if you go to the next slide. This is a picture of the First United Methodist Church of Loomis. And in the 1920s and beyond, there were about 30% to 50% of each school was populated by Japanese Americans. So it showed kind of the culture of the area. And as we said, the Japanese people began settling in Plas County around the turn of the century. And this is the First United Methodist Church, which is just on Brace Road, and right by Jan's business down there. And that was founded in 1903. They were integral part of the Loomis community. They owned businesses, farms, and worked in the packing sheds, which are now all different businesses. They helped make Loomis the special place that we know and love today. So clockwise from left, that's an orchard farmer. As a majority of the Japanese Americans were farmers. My family, like I said, had an orchard just down King Road. Loomis Mutual, which some of you know is just right across the street. The brick building is still there. That's the Kubo family. And then Loomis Grammar School students in the corner. And as you can see by the faces, it's probably close to 50% Japanese Americans in there. This is a picture of a sign notifying people of the Japanese descent that had to report for incarceration. And I'm not sure how many of you know about what happened then. Following the attack on Pearl Harbor by Japanese aircraft back in December 7, 1941, President Roosevelt eventually signed Executive Order 9066 on February 19, 1942. And there were nearly 2,000 Plas County residents that were forced to leave. The citizens were given about six days' notice or less to pack up, leave their homes, and report to evacuation centers and internment camps. And this was all without due process of any laws or any violation, and this was absolutely a violation of their constitutional rights. They were only able to take and carry what they could carry in one suitcase. And so that's, and they were not told where they were going to be sent to. They had to either sell their homes or leave their homes. Some were destroyed and some were taken care of. Most of them were not there when they returned, their property or their homes. Some hid their belongings. There were some people that were nice enough to keep their belongings for them when they got back, but most of them returned to nothing. From May to August 1942, oh, I already said that, thank you, okay. And this is a picture of World War II veterans. That's actually my father, Frank Kegeta, on the left, Shigeo Yakodi, and Al Nita. And despite being imprisoned by the government, Japanese American men on the West Coast volunteered, and most of them volunteered out of the, actually when they were interned. And so they volunteered out of the camps. The, approximately 2011, they were actually given the Congressional Gold Medal, the 442nd. So I brought a medal to show you guys if anyone wants to see that too. And I was lucky enough to go to Washington DC with my father when he received the medal, and it was quite an honor. The 442nd was one of the most decorated units in US military history for its size. Approximately 160. Approximately 116 men from the Plas County, they served in World War II, and two were actually killed in action. My uncle actually came back with an injury, and my dad used to tease him because he got shot, but he was a medic. He got shot behind, so my dad teased him because he was probably running away, but he was probably tending to someone when he got shot. They rescued the lost battalion in France in October 1944 and freed survivors of a death march in Germany. There was one person from our area, Roy Ueda, who was actually served and was in that rescue of the lost battalion. And that's a famous part in history that some people might have read about. So as I mentioned before, there was isei, then nisei, second generation was born in the United States, third generation born in the United States. Gamon, the picture of Masao Sam Kuharara, who was born in Tulley Lake Internment Camp. Gamon is enduring the seemingly unbearable with patience and dignity. A lot of the Japanese Americans really exemplified that, and it was kind of taught to us as later generations. The first Japanese, first generation Japanese isei and their nisei children returned to Loomis and Plas County between 1945 and 1946 after being interned for three years. And some people, like Gordon Takamoto, hey Gordy, raise your hand, whose family owned and ran Main Drug, their family owned and ran Main Drug for about 75 years. He was actually born in the camp. And the isei and nisei and their children often didn't even speak about the experience. We didn't know about what happened to them until Sierra College did the first Standing Guard book. Most wanted to just get back to their normal life and not burden others with their shame, their sadness and anger that many felt. So in 1945 and 1946, a lot of them started returning back to their homes. And the picture on the left is Rose Takamoto, Doc's wife, with baby Gordy and sister Jean. Top right is Frank Bonito, Plas High School teacher, who helped keep the Makamotos' home and farm safe. The Makamotos, one of the Makamoto families owned a 76 station, which is now where a lot of target in that area is right there. They helped keep their farm safe and working order, and they were able to return to their farm once they came back from being interned. And then there's some road signs that were posted in Loomis. I won't even want to say, repeat that. But there were some, there were some stores that did have signs in Loomis that said, "No jobs allowed" when they came back. 19, oh, keeping history alive. Picture, the Loomis Library 80th Month of Remembrance flyer and panel discussion at the Blue Goose. We put on, our first presentation was at the Blue Goose. Was it three years ago? Is that when that was? Four years ago? And then in February 1922, or, no, in February 2022, the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center hosted the 80th anniversary and month remembrance for Japanese American history. And thank you, Sarah, for putting that all together. The Town of Loomis had a proclamation. Each week, there were lectures, films, and book discussions, pop-up history museum, and a panel discussion that we put on, and these events were extremely popular and very well-attended. So, oh, I must have skipped this later. Okay. We are continuing to work together to keep this history alive, and we believe there's so many more valuable lessons to learn. Every time we meet, our group meets, we all learn something new too. Instead of recalling, instead of repeating past mistakes, we can grow and do better now and in the future. And every year, we host a student assembly at Del Oro High School and a panel discussion. And we also raise funds for the Standing Guard Project. The work we've done and the reception we've received inspired Sierra College Press to publish a second Standing Guard book, and the new book is expected to be coming out soon, hopefully in May. This history has shaped our entire community, so we have made a great effort to reach out to other organizations. And our community partners include Del Oro High School, Sierra College, the Plas Buddhist Church in Penrin, the Loomis First United Methodist Church, Loomis Basin Historical Society, Loomis Library, Ace Hardware, American Legion Post 775, Veterans of Foreign Wars. They've all contributed in some way to keep the history alive. And this year's topic, we hope to have it on the protectors, the people that faced scrutiny from others by protecting the land that was originally owned by the Japanese Americans. And we're hoping, and it's coming to fruition, we hope, to have an author of this book, Two Days in One Suitcase. She has said she will come and speak to the Del Oro High School and do an evening presentation. It's a great read if anyone has a chance to read about this. And we hope you will join us for our annual event that we will host later on. So thank you very much for your attention. Oh, I forgot to mention, this maquette, oh, I guess I should talk in my mic. There's an interesting story behind this. This is at the Santucci Justice Center. It's a depiction of the lost battalion. And that maquette was auctioned off, and someone won it, and they came, when my father was still alive, they brought it to him, since they knew he was in World War II. They said, "I don't deserve this, you do." So they gave it to him. Yeah, I know, it would touch my heart. So that's what that is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Comments?
No questions.
Would the Standing Guard Committee please like to stand up?
Yes.
Thank you. And then I think we have a little presentation from Ace Hardware. Sandy can come up. This is for the Standing Guard.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sandy Richards. I work at Loomis Ace Hardware. I am the operations manager there, and we hold this very dear to our heart because now we occupy their building over there at Main Drug. One of the things we did recently was we opened up our soda fountain, their soda fountain, and in recognition of that, we're scooping ice cream to, you know, represent what it stood for in the last 75 years when their family owned the Main Drug Hardware Store. We also, in addition to, we have memorabilia on the counter. We have one laminated flyer that talks briefly about the family and the camps. And then we have one of their books that we have on the counter people can read. And then I've been kind of collecting books or trying to collect books along the way, so when parents come in with their kids to have ice cream, they can do a little bit of education. We try to, you know, give them a little something other than an ice cream scoop, but to let them know kind of what happened here in Loomis. And then, as it relates to myself, I actually, my very best friend growing up was Japanese, and her family were in the intern camps. And then my daughter currently lives in Cody, Wyoming, and so if you ever go to Cody, they have a museum there, which is Hart Mountain, which is one of the other internment camps. My daughter lives just a couple miles from there, and it's a phenomenal, phenomenal museum to go to. It's very interactive. Wyoming sends their schools there to get them educated on, you know, what happened also. So there's a lot of history behind this. I'm familiar with it from those types of things, and then I met the Standing Guard Group and have been trying to keep it alive, just basically for Main Drug, for the hardware store. So I'm representing Greg Brenning and the whole Ace Hardware team. We have the backyard store, we have the paint store, and we have the regular Loomis Ace Hardware. About six months ago, we created a rub. We worked with a local vendor, and we created a barbecue rub seasoning. It's called Black and Gold, and we sell them for $100. And the point of it, it has high-level ingredients, but the point was also to sell it and then give a portion of the proceeds to the fundraiser that we chose to be Standing Guard. So with that said, we are here to, Stu, if you would like to come up? We are here to present a check for $2,000 to Standing Guard to help them with their project. So we really, oh.
Put you guys back together really quick. Let's get a picture of you guys. Okay, wonderful.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, can the whole Standing Guard please come on up? And with Sandy, come on, and we'll take a quick picture. Maybe the mayor?
Do you want to take a picture for the town? You should be in this.
Maybe we all, all five of us should be in there.
Oh, sorry. Oh, really? Are you sure? Why don't you two?
Are we doing?
I guess. I was just going to take a picture.
Do you want to meet Carol? Got one more.
Got one more to come.
Okay, everybody say cheese. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. My pleasure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, lastly, we love Loomis. You know we're Ace Hardware, so we're your people.
Thank you for that presentation. It was a surprise to me to hear that it was only three months between Pearl Harbor and then that decree relocating Japanese Americans. And it's, it just reminds you how easy it is to get your rights taken away from you so fast, and it's, the system is very fragile, and it's, we have to fight for it all the time. It's just, and again, I don't know that this is the exact quote, but as those forget history are doomed to repeat it, and I'm worried that that's going to happen again. It's a constant worry of mine, so please continue to tell your story as much as you possibly can, because we all need to hear it.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you again.
Thank you so much, Standing Guard Committee and Ace. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you to Ace too. All right, next we have seniors' first presentation, Plas Rides presentation. Wes?
We do, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we want to do public comment on that? I think we should, just in case there's questions, yeah. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the, before, as they all leave?
Before you go.
That's not even, roll forward.
But there was public comment after both of them, and I thought it seemed more appropriate.
After the senior's first recommendation, that's where.
I know, but it seemed like, all right, fine. Anybody online have anything they want to add? No? All right. Now we'll do the seniors first, sorry, Wes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this item is, you know, we wanted to highlight a service that's available to seniors in the area for the be able to get transport through a grant program in here. And tonight, we have an individual here that's going to highlight the program that's available to the community.
As a quick introduction, this is Mark Hall. I had the privilege of meeting him with one of the other ministries that I work with, where we have a large homebound group that, I heard about what they do, and I was amazed that I had not ever heard that the service was available, and it's newer, but when you think about, maybe not you, but your parents or your neighbor, what's available, what we have at our fingertips is pretty amazing. So anyway, this is Mark Hall with seniors first.
Thank you, Carol. It's wonderful to be here tonight. I know transportation has a great history, not at all like the history that we just witnessed and heard, but I'm here to share with you a very needed transportation program, and not just with you. If you don't mind, I'm going to swivel. Because this is all for you too.
That's right.
You are very much the audience of this presentation. Seniors First, you've probably heard of us. Meals on Wheels, Information and Assistance, been around a long time doing good things for seniors in Plas County. This, what I'm going to talk about tonight, is a unique and very cool transportation program, primarily because it is serving a growing, a fast-growing segment of our population that really needs a cool and unique program to get to go grocery shopping, to get to go to medical appointments, and they just don't typically have the wherewithal, physical, mental, or financial, to use transportation to take care of essential needs. So it's called Plas Rides. What is this market? It's larger than you probably think. It's for anybody 60 years or over, for one. I'm a card-carrying member.
Hey, Carol.
Right? 60 years and over, or, not and, or, someone who has a disability, has difficulty using the existing forms of transportation that many people just don't even think about they can use. By the way, it's for people also who don't drive. But that's not actually true, because you can drive and still use the program, and I'll give you an example of that. And it's for people who have low, who are on low income. What is that segment in this county? It's pretty large. You know, what are we, 440,000? I don't know. 21% are over the age of 60. 6% are low income. So you've got 27% right there. In Loomis, I just checked some numbers tonight, in Loomis, your population, 67, 7,000, something like that. 21% right on the button who are over 65. 3% are low income, and actually 10% have a disability. So we're looking at a sizable population just in Loomis that could potentially use this program. Now, obviously, there are a number of people that still drive in that population, that 2,400 people, but you get the point. Okay. You get the point, right? So this program is essentially for folks that don't drive, have difficulty using public transportation, have a barrier that they can't use public transportation. And that population is growing. 10,000 people a day turning age 65 nationally. I think 5,000 of them are moving to Lincoln. We've got a lot of folks here in that age group that are aging out of our Del Webb communities, and they're having to do one thing that all of us are going to end up having to do, and that's turning to our kids and saying, "Here are my car keys. The time is coming for all of us." So the way the program works, it's a mileage reimbursement program. I call it a, I call it the Transportation Rewards Program. So mileage reimbursement, we, we being Mike Costa of the Western Plas Consolidated Transportation Service Agency, where all, the funds come locally, and they worked with, they came to seniors first to administer, because we were quasi in the transportation arena to begin with. So mileage reimbursement at the IRS standard, 2025, 70 cents per mile. So we will offer 200 miles that could be reimbursed for an eligible rider, and typically eligible rides are to medical appointments, grocery shopping, essential needs. There are some technicalities where we can work with people who are taking trips that could be reimbursed, but we do that at seniors' first level. Again, eligible riders are anyone who's Someone could be transported down to UCSF for a specialist, and it's reimbursed, up to 200 miles. That's pretty cool. That's pretty unique when it comes to transportation, especially for this group of people, this growing needy group of folks. A lot of them just staying at home. You know, they're homebound, they're isolating, they don't have access. So my job as the outreach person in the last two and a half months when I came aboard is to get the word out as much as possible and encourage people to give us a call. I have brochures here, by the way. And as Carol said, find out about it, right? Because I would imagine, I don't know, David, I don't know if you...
Do I look...
60, do you? I mean, what? See how he jumped at that so quickly? I was gonna, I was gonna say, "Do you ever drive your parents who can't drive somewhere?"
I do.
So, so, you know, I'll give you some context. Who could use this? That's right there. Who is already driving their parents that can't drive? Their macular degeneration, or they...
Daddy.
Whatever, whatever the barrier is, right? There, there's a lot of existing folks who could use this service right now. I had a situation, I spoke to a manager of a mobile home park up in Auburn. She drives, so this is one of the exceptions where you could still drive and use the program, but she has to go to Sacramento to get a shot in her eye once a month. She can't drive home, she can't drive back. There's a very good chance that she could be eligible. That trip, whoever's driving her down there once a month could be reimbursed at 70 cents a mile. And the thing is, a lot of people don't want to ask a favor, "Will you please drive me?" And, you know, when you're getting reimbursed 70 cents a mile, which is way above the cost of, of gas, because it does obviously IRS factors in, wear and tear in the car, other things, you know, then it's a ask with a reward attached to it. So it's an easier ask. And we do have a, there's another element of the benefits to the program that's kind of a last resort, it's a bailout. So imagine, well, you don't have to imagine, you just think in your recent history, how long it took to book a medical appointment, right? So you have your driver lined up, and, and you're all set to go, and the driver called and said, "I'm not feeling well, I can't take you." And it took three months to get that appointment. So those folks that are using our program twice a month have available to them a bailout. We will, we do not want them to miss that appointment, so we will hire a, a commercial transportation company like TLC or Golden Mountain Transit to make sure that that person gets to that doctor's appointment and back. There's, there's a, there's a money in the budget to do that. So I just don't want you to keep me a secret, or keep this program a secret, because I would imagine even, there's even some of you out here in the audience, my guess is you, if you don't know someone right now who could use this, you're gonna bump into somebody at the coffee shop or even the grocery store at some point who can use this program. And I just encourage you to think of Seniors First, Placer Rides, there are lots of options where we can work with people to get them to where they need to go. I like to say, this program is where you want to go, when you want to go, and with whom you want to drive you. Where you want to go is you can go beyond the boundaries of what a lot of public transportation's willing to give you right now. When you want to go, you don't have to be beholden to a schedule that's already posted by a local, you know, transportation company. You set the time. You decide with your, with your driver when you want to go. And with whom you want to go, if you're in your 70, if you're 75 or 80, 80 years old, it's important to know and trust the person driving you. Those are all rewards of this program. And we rolled it out, when was it, a year and a half ago, something like that? And we're, we're growing person by person, you know, assisted living centers. I speak to all of them, and the first thing I ask is, "Would you like a ride to church?" Because most of those centers don't offer transportation on Sundays or Saturdays. So, and then I call the church and try to get a chance to talk to them about it and link them up. And it, it's just, there's so many examples of where people at that age, or low income, or have a disability, are not able to get to where they want to go, when they want to go, and with whom they want to go with. Questions?
Yeah, thank you. That's, it sounds like a really great program. Does anybody have any questions?
There's one in the back.
They're not.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
Well, it's important for them to ask.
How much ahead of time do we need to give to get a ride to a senior? Like a day in advance, an hour in advance?
So the, the relationship, in your name?
Jeff.
Jeff. So the relationship, Jeff, is between the user, who is the rider, and their driver, their volunteer driver. So we don't, they don't call us to schedule. They call each other to schedule that ride, they go do that ride, and then they put it in a log and send us the log at the end of the month, and we reimburse. Yeah.
So this isn't something you're facilitating for a ride?
No, 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 we're, correct, correct. Our role in this, again, is devoid of drivers. We're not, we're not endorsing drivers, it's a liability issue, but we are here to reimburse, and we are here to help out. And I like to say that what we are, we're in the, we're in the role of approving rather than denying. I mean, we have to work within guide, you know, some, some guardrails and such, but it is such a neat, I can't, you know, so many people are turning this age and passing today, I bet today, there were, there are a few people in this county right now who just gave their keys to their kids, because they, they, their doctor said, you know, there's a, maybe not macular degeneration, but there's a, a mental disability that maybe you shouldn't drive anymore, you know? It's happening right and left in this county.
So is there, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, just to his question, you, he was, I understand the relationship of the driver and turning in, but you were saying the two times a month that there's a bailout driver. I'm sorry, did you say that that was with the, the partnership agencies that you already have, like Gold River? Is that what you said? Okay. So in that case, two times a month, you will give them another agency, but not, okay.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Correct. And, and, and the money situation is, again, 200 miles a month, 70 cents a month, $140 if, you know, if someone utilized all 200 miles. We pay the user of the program. We pay the rider. And then the rider would pay the driver. If the driver's David driving his parents, obviously, David, you're gonna say, "I don't need the money," right? The parents keep the money, the rider keeps the money. So that relationship is not for, only for setting up the ride, but it's also the monetary side of it. We, we are gonna issue a reimbursement check. What they do with that check is up to them.
So how do people sign up for this?
Well, they call Seniors First, Placer Rides, and I have some brochures. I think the main thing is, if there are any questions, just give Seniors First a call, and that's, that's the best place to start. And I'm old school, I'm going to people's kitchen tables. I'm like, I'm like the old life insurance guy. I will go to their table, because we're growing this one rider at a time, and I want to make sure that they understand how it works, and that's just how I roll.
So you're gonna leave brochures, and maybe on the back table?
Yeah.
All right, okay. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
And David, I can also put, we can get the link to Seniors First and make sure it's on our website as well, under some of the services.
And we have a place in Town Hall for brochures and stuff.
Absolutely. I'll make sure I get some more.
Okay, thank you, and thank all of you too.
We have, we, we do have a question. We're checking the audience, and then we do have Miguel online.
Open this up for a public comment. Does anybody else in the audience have any questions? Come on forward and ask.
Good evening, Town Council members and members of the public. My name is Mike Costa, I'm a principal transportation planner with the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. We actually do administer the Western Placer Consolidated Transportation Services Agency, or what we like to refer to as the CTSA for short. Very, very proud of this program and our partnership with Seniors First. I think Mark did an excellent job at explaining this program. And I just want to add to, you know, think of this as truly a compliment to all of the existing public transit services that do exist here in the South Placer region. You do have Placer County Transit that runs through the town of Loomis here along Taylor Road. But for those that are out of reach of that service, this is an excellent complimentary opportunity for people to have some sort of transportation service that, again, is funded at the CTSA level. So I just wanted to echo that and say, you know, thank you for this council's promotion of this program for the service needs in our community.
Thank you. Anybody else here want to come up and make a public comment?
No.
You need to, we need, people at home, we need to hear you.
One of those things that we have is a hard time getting people to the senior center, and it's just outside of Dial Ride. And as I was sitting here, someone just texted me and asked for a ride while I was sitting here.
Wow.
Which I will do. But I'm telling you that, okay, one of the things, there's multiple people. So do you get to build this multiple times if we pick up 60, not 60, six people? How do you, how's that work?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need now.
It's per user, not driver.
It's per user, yeah, that's it.
Right, that, I guess, I guess that's the rewards piece that has to do with the driver, right? So if you were picking up five people to go to church, and all five people were enrolled, five times 70 cents a mile.
Yeah, that's great. That's like a whole little, like, side Uber hustle. Like, yeah, that's, that's actually great.
All right, anybody else here?
You're just building economic revenue all around Placer County.
Sorry, Chamber of Commerce person here tonight? Oh, I was just gonna say, maybe Chamber of Commerce could have...
Maybe the Chamber of Commerce could have, have Mark over to the Chamber of Coffee and make a presentation to, to the business people in town.
Who have relatives and friends too.
I did get my card out, I was gonna give it to them.
Thanks, Jean. I don't see anybody else here. Anybody online? You said Miguel? Okay.
Go ahead, Miguel.
Miguel, you're 5911, great for Loomis. My only concern is, and I know a couple seniors that are basically isolated, one has a daughter of Chilis in Reno, Nevada, and they're, anyway, there are these isolated seniors that really don't have a friend that they can call and say, "Can you give me a ride under this program?" Is there any way of having maybe, I don't know, a list of drivers or somebody? So if somebody's isolated, they could call and say, "You know, I need a ride, can somebody come and get me?" That's my question.
I, Mark from Seniors First, I wish, I hear that all the time, and I wish I had drivers to hand out, but there's a liability line that we can't cross. Now, having said that, and I know Mike, my boss, is right here, I, when I go out and share this program, I, I am looking for, my ear is always to the ground for somebody who wants to, as Amanda says, a side hustle. You know, someone who wants to do good has time. I have a little black book in the back of my pocket, and when I hear of someone who's willing to do that, I will ask them, "Where's, what circumference would you drive?", you know, a little bit about them. And if I run across somebody who's in that vicinity, who would be a user of the program, and as you said, isolates, doesn't have the social network or the social, social ability to identify a volunteer driver, I might say, "Well, you know, here's someone you might call." I'm not endorsing them, I'm not, I'm not referring them, but you might call them and see if you hit it off. See if you want to take a test drive together. So that's, that's how that could be worked.
Thank you. Thanks, Miguel. Anybody else online? Nope. All right, we're gonna close public comment. Does anybody else have any com, any more comments from here? All right, yeah, thank you very much for coming. Sounds, sounds awesome. Yeah, it's, I hope people take advantage of it. Yeah, okay. All right, moving on to matters of interest to council members. Does anybody have anything? No? No? I have one thing. We, a couple months ago, we talked about the shade structure downtown. I don't want to bring that back, but I would like to see maybe entertaining the notion of planting tree, more trees downtown. So I, we can't discuss it, but I think that, I think maybe in the future, if we could bring something little forwards, just a couple of trees, one or two, that would be nice. Yeah. With that, we're now to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, my reports in the, included in the packet for the people to review. There's a couple items I wanted to highlight tonight. Coming in March, we're gonna actually have a presentation from Placer Land Trust. There's an opportunity for Loomis to participate in the Clover Valley Preservation, and I think there are some funds that could probably be utilized to help in that effort in there. But we, again, will have Jeff with Placer Land Trust that will do a full presentation that counts on at the March meeting on that item. And if anybody's wondering what the, the Clover Valley floor, the acquisition, and what that would look like, in my manager's report, you'll see the, the area in question. Something that the community may see in the coming months is the removal of the structure on the WW molding site. I know most people don't know that Scott Paris Enterprises actually purchased the structure from the original owner on there, and he's now has a buyer, is arranging to have that removed off of the, the site. Yes, the structure is on the town's property, but the owner has the right to have it removed on there. Last item, and I may be a little premature, so Chief, please stop me if I am. Now there's, we're having conversations with South Placer Fire District to look at the lot behind Station 18, is a possible mutual agreement to kind of look at adding some more additional parking in the downtown area. And again, when Chief comes up here, may, may say, "Wes, we're not doing that yet." But I just wanted to make the council aware and the public aware that staff in the town is looking for other opportunities. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to entertain any questions or comments you may have.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions, comments? No? All right, thanks, Wes. Now, moving on to the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center Librarians' Report.
All right, good evening, everyone. I, before I begin, I want to let you all know, I actually did think ahead this time and put some calendars out in, on the table in the lobby, so if you are interested in anything you hear about tonight, you can actually pick up a calendar, circle it, we've got both February... Is a possible mutual agreement to kind of look at adding some more additional parking in the downtown area. And again, when Chief comes up here, may say, Wes, we're not doing that yet. But I just wanted to make the council aware and the public aware that staff in the town is looking for other opportunities. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to entertain any questions or comments you may have.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions, comments? All right, thanks, Wes. Now moving on to the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center Librarians' Report.
All right, good evening, everyone. I, before I begin, I want to let you all know, I actually did think ahead this time and put some calendars out in, on the table in the lobby. So if you are interested in anything you hear about tonight, you can actually pick up a calendar, circle it. We've got both February and March there, back to back. So I'm going to try and do that for every council meeting from here on out. So to begin with, I wanted to let you know that it is tax season again, as you all are aware. And so that means that AARP Tax Aid is back at the library every Tuesday and Wednesday by appointment only, filing taxes for free. And so that is open to anyone regardless of age, income, et cetera, as long as your taxes are fairly straightforward. They should be able to help you out with that. So that being said, we have our regular programs going on, such as Japanese Storytime on Wednesdays at 10:30, our Storytime in English on Fridays at 10:30. And then some things that we've started this month, on February 13th, we're going to have a creative writing club for ages eight to 11 at 3:30, so that's after school. And it's going to be going on every other week for the next couple of months. I believe it's through March that that's going to be happening. And so they're going to get a journal, and they're going to learn how to work on some creative writing prompts. We have Placer County Genealogical Society that's going to be at the library on February 14th for a genealogy study group at 1 o'clock. And then also on February 14th, it is Valentine's Day, and we are going to do Canvas and Coco for anyone over the age of eight. So if we thought it might be a great idea for like a mommy-daughter date or something like that, that's going to be at 4 o'clock. And it's going to be one of those like paint and sips, right? Where you're painting the same picture as a group, but instead of wine, you get some cocoa. Should be really fun. On Saturday, the 15th, we have our Master Builders Club. That's our Lego Club at 10:30 and Manga Club at 3 o'clock. And then on February 20th, we have our Genetic Genealogy DNA Study Group at 10 o'clock. And then another program that we're starting that's going to run for a couple of months, starting on February 21st, is Let's Learn Haragana. And that's a Japanese writing style, and that's open to ages 12 and up, and that will be at 3:30. On February 22nd, we have our Monthly Read to a Dog. And then also on the 22nd, we have Folsom Zoo to You. So unfortunately, no live animals from the Folsom Zoo, but representatives from the Folsom Zoo are going to come to the library, talk about the zoo, what kind of animals they have, their stories, and, you know, so you can learn a little bit about it. And then next time you go to the Folsom Zoo, you'll know all of this information ahead of time. Our Spice Club is going to be on February 25th, and at 6 o'clock. And the spice, or I guess not spice, but the food is going to be buckwheat, so that should be interesting. And then on March 1st, we have our New Tea of the Month. And then finally, on March 8th, we will have the Placer County Master Gardeners doing a presentation on Starting Your Summer Vegetable Garden at 10 o'clock. And then, of course, they will have the Open Garden with the docents in the garden after that as well. And that, by the time I see you again, I'll have a whole list of other things that we'll be doing, so I can answer any questions you may have.
I have one.
Thank you, Sarah.
Can I ask that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Friday, that's for anybody, single, couple, whatever, you can go to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, anybody, as long as you're over the age of eight, you are welcome.
Anybody else? All right, yeah, thank you, Sarah. All right, now we have the Loomis Chamber of Commerce update.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello. Everyone up here?
Well, I didn't just wear my fancy Loomis clothes for nothing. I'm here to invite you all to the Boots and Bling. Got my boots, I've got my bling. The annual awards dinner is going to be this coming Thursday, the 20th, or next Thursday, excuse me, the 20th. We are, that is our awards night for the chamber. So dust off your boots, put on a little fancy bling, and come join us for a fun night. We're doing a delicious barbecue, a live dessert auction, there'll be line dancing, and just a fun night with community to celebrate the award winners for this year. We do have tickets still available, they are going quick, but we have some individual tickets and some sponsor tables. All of that information is on our website. And also on the website is the community events calendar, which has started to fill up, which is nice to see. A lot of the community members and chamber members and things like that are all posting things. We've got Ticket Chocolate and a Carriage House Farms Valentine's collaboration. They're doing a, I think it's the 13th through the 15th down at Ticket Chocolate. They're doing a little pop-up for Valentine's Day, so shop local, support local for Valentine's Day. There's a couple of other options on there as well. So that's filling up, which is nice to see. And then we've got the regular scheduled Coffee Connect on March 6th here in this room, and then our Monthly Mixer on the 20th at Manresa Mortgage. So this February mixer will be in place of the awards dinner, so there won't be a normal mixer. So I'm just inviting you all to join us. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
You have some awards that you've already given out. Are they, are they a public, can you announce them yet?
Almost, they're almost there.
You can't tell anybody?
We've got one person still outstanding, so.
Okay, so you can't tell any award members?
They will be posted shortly. So stay tuned, but yes, get a ticket and come see us that night and just celebrate with all, all the winners, so.
Did you say the mixer was?
The March mixer is going to be the 20th. It's always the third Thursday of the month. And all of those are on the website as well. They're already all scheduled out for the year, so those are all confirmed, so those are all on there. If you wanted to find one of your local businesses to support and come hang out. All righty, thank you someone?
Thank you. And now we have our Allied Agencies update. We're going to start with fire, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. Really appreciate the opportunity, as always, to talk. We'll go over our statistics and data, and then we'll talk about some fun things, and then I'll even touch a little bit on what Wes had to say earlier. Too fast. We ran some calls, we did some good stuff, helped the community. Again, most of our calls are medical. You can see the hot box on the wrong map there. That looks like Granite Babe Me. It's been one of those weeks already, so I have to apologize for the wrong map, but the information is correct. Maybe next slide. 335 total calls for service. We're tracking, we had some more good intent calls related to weather and some service needs. A lot of downed trees, be careful out there. And then false alarms are a little lower. But in general, we're staying right about the same, 71% medical, 4% false alarms, and 24% service calls. Next slide. Here in the town, you're highlighted in yellow, and we're 8 minutes and 23 seconds out the door. That's a little better than last month, and we're getting better every month. Overall, for the entire district, 8 minutes and 36 seconds. Some of that is being isolated over here, so we get multiple calls, it takes us a little longer, but we always try and get there as fast as we can. Next slide, please. Some updates. The district changed their board meetings. We're now the third Tuesday of the month. You're all used to coming out on Tuesdays. You should stop by one of our meetings next week. It'll be great. Station 16 Open House, Saturday, March 1st at 5300 Olive Ranch Road. Burgers, dogs, drinks on us. Come by, check out the fire engines, meet your firefighters, squirt some water, and we'll be there having a good time from 11 to 1. Some tips, we're right in the middle of winter-ish, I think. Today's nice, the next few days are going to be a little bit wet and cold, I believe. So if you're burning anything, or you have a portable heater, keep it at least three feet away from anything. Plug only one heater per outlet, please. If you put two in there, or you run a power strip and run a bunch of stuff, it impacts the electrical system, it will cause a fire. If you're cleaning out your ashes, put them in a metal container and store them away from the house. We had a rash of fires earlier in the year because people were placing them in their trash can, even when they were, thought they were cool, a day or two later, and it was catching the house on fire. And then I have to ask anybody, this is a question, do you have a fire extinguisher? And if you do, when was the last time you looked where it was, made sure it was in service, and do all that stuff? So a little homework before our next meeting, see if you have one. If not, I'm sure our friends down the street will be more than happy to sell you one. And so please do that. To Wes's comment earlier, yes, we'll be talking about a partnership with the town here at our meeting next week. And so I'll have some more information next week about that topic. So you're a little premature after we changed our meeting schedule, but I appreciate the update. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Chief, what's the location of your meeting? Is it at a station?
It is at Station 17, which is at 6900 Eureka Road, Eureka and Auburn, Folsom.
Oh, yeah, I know that station. Okay. Thank you.
And, well, I'll say that for now, but that's a good question. Thank you.
All right, no further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now the sheriffs.
Good evening, everyone. I'll go over the, thank you. Go over the stats, and then a couple of things I'll cover, and, and I'll do it. So for the month of January, our total number of incidents was 247, 32 reports taken, and three, three calls for service were transient-related. Down the right-hand column, the suspicious activity calls, 16, disturbance calls, seven, alarm calls, 26, and traffic stops, 70. Now we're down the center of the pie graphs, I'll start, almost 50/50 there, 125 to 122 deputy versus citizens initiated activities, right? That means our deputies are out there making stops and contacting people in this community, so that's a good thing. The next pie graph is our, our priority calls. Like I've explained in the past, it's a 1 through 9 level of priority. So when you call 911, dispatcher listens to the, what you're telling them the problem is, and they have to place it into a priority level. And there's the pie graph that breaks that down. And then our top 10 dispositions for the month. Contacted with no crime, pretty regular one there. That was at 125, so problem caused, drops down to 38. Reports taken. Unable to locate, means we get dispatched to something and can't find what the person was reporting. Sites, so that's the number of sites versus the traffic stops there. Assist other agencies, that's including the fire and other law enforcement agencies. False alarms, and then so on and so forth for the, for the lower end ones there. So those are the stats. With not a lot to report this month, oh, other than Sarah failed to mention that I had a, a sold-out house, I would say. I'll have to brag a little bit. Anyways, I, I had the, the great honor of reading at the library again. We do that about four times a year. It's a great program. I have, I have a good time doing that. And to much my surprise, maybe it was because of the rain, I don't know, but it was a full house of a bunch of little ones, and it was really cool. And I got to read a couple of new books, so that was, that was also great. While we're on it with the weather, and I'll be done here in just a second, I just want to remind everyone, when you're operating your vehicle, you have to have three things with you. Your driver's license, your registration, and insurance. And if you have those in electronic form, that's fine, but you have to be able to, be able to get them on your electronic device. A lot of people say, oh, I have my insurance on my phone, but don't know how to open the app to get that information. Okay, so that doesn't help, right? So have those three things when you, when you operate a motor vehicle. And then just some of the highlighted things that I see around the town of Loomis that we've kind of been dealing with lately. Remember, when you're making a right-hand turn, it's 200 feet before the intersection. So we can't just drive over that 200 feet, 500 feet, 600 feet in a bicycle lane to get past traffic is not legal, okay? So you have 200 feet. Also, the anti-grid lock laws, we see that very heavily at King and Taylor. If you do not have enough space to move from the limit line and then exit the intersection on the other side, if there's a lot of traffic, then you don't have enough room to move forward. And you wait there at the line until you, do you have enough room. If you're blocking traffic, that's the anti-grid lock law, okay? Stopping on a roadway, I see this in front of the schools all the time. So if there is not enough room for you to pull into Loomis Grammar, which is across the street over there, and you did not, other parents beat you there, that doesn't mean you get to stop on Taylor Road and sit and block the entire roadway for other motorists on that roadway. If there's not enough room, you have to proceed on, unfortunately. And it does happen around the schools quite a bit, and it's, it's, it's a frustrating thing for people doing business in our town that need to get through and make other deliveries or get to another job, and they get stuck in this massive traffic jam around school exit time. And then finally, one of my personal ones is the three feet for safety law. This has to do with bicyclists. It's a near and dear one to my heart. You have to provide three feet when you're passing a bicyclist that's operating their bicycle in a roadway. Three feet. If you don't have three feet, then guess what? You don't get to pass. It's just that simple, okay? And that's there for the safety of the bicyclist, so. Lieutenant?
Yes, sir. I just have a couple of things. Good evening. A couple of things. First, we are doing copy with first responders at Smithville Coffee on the 24th from 9:30 to 10:30 in the morning. My understanding, Fire Department's going to be there, CHP will be there. We'll have quite a few people in green from there. Encourage anybody and everybody to stop by and say hi. So we just compiled the numbers for our annual report, just to kind of give you an overview of 2024. We call it Zone 1, Newcastle down to County Line, West Roseville, down, you know, and then down to Folsom, was 16,375 calls for service. Out of all that, the poll card, Loomis Township was 3,263 calls for service. That includes traffic stops, it includes burglary reports, any type of contact that goes out with dispatch. I just wanted to kind of give you an overview. The other thing that, I'm putting on my old detective hat for a second, coming into tax season, right? People get their W2s mailed to them. We encourage everybody to check their mail on a daily basis, get their mail out of their mailbox, because we're going to start seeing a serious uptick in mail theft, and it becomes an issue for people, identity theft. It's not just the mail theft, and then all of a sudden, it turns into a $10,000 fraud case, and it really can wreck people's credits. So we just want to make sure the word's out. We're probably going to put a social media post out there at the office just to remind everybody, stop by the mailbox. My own mailbox in Newcastle about six months ago was broken into. Luckily, there was nothing in there, but it's just a good reminder. That's all I have, if anybody has any questions.
What day is February 23rd? Is that a Saturday, or is that during the week?
It's during the week. I can tell you right now.
Okay, all right.
It's a Monday.
It is a Monday, that's correct.
Oh, it's a Monday. Okay.
I had a couple of comments. First, I want to say thank you for doing the library thing. You, you have this job, and then you still devote all this extra time to the, our, our community. I love the fact that you did the library thing. I love the fact that you do that math class. I mean, I'm a huge proponent of that, and never stop, please. And so thank you to that.
With the math class, please, spread the word. We are, still have dates to fill up for other schools that are.
All right, I will, I will, I'll let them know. Where is my list?
Not just here in this. Right, and you'll go anywhere in Placer County? Okay.
Also, you mentioned the 200 feet before the, the corner.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, I witnessed an accident just tonight. I was driving up Sierra College, and somebody was making a right-hand turn through traffic because it was backed up, and there was a car in, on the shoulder essentially, driving, didn't, and I, I passed it, I saw them turning. I was about two, two cars later, I saw the other car coming, I turned to my wife, I said, there's going to be an accident, and I look in my side mirror and dented. So I wasn't going to say it, but I thought, you know what, it's, if you, if it, if you guys got called and you need a witness, then I'm here, right? In case you need that, there I was. And the last thing, you kind of talked about the overview of the, the crime statistics for the last year.
Yes.
One of the things that I was going to ask for, once Costco has been open for a year, I think that the community would like to know how that has affected, if that has affected our crime rates at all. And so like if in, I don't know, when did it open?
May.
May? Yeah. And so then, like maybe in June, if we had something where it said, look, here was the, here was 2023, 20, and here is 2024, and my guess is, it's probably mostly stable.
Very much so. In fact, there was an issue that we thought maybe a month ago, give or take, where we thought we were having a significant vehicle burglary, stolen vehicle thing, and luckily, that wasn't the case. So I actually ran a report at that time, and it was minimal calls for service, mostly medical aids, assists, stuff like that. There was. There was less than three theft reports from there. It's been minimal. We did have an incident yesterday that I'd emailed you about, that that's dealt with. They are from out of the area. They're not in this county. So other than that, that's kind of a one-off for that area. It's really safe. I actually shop there, you know, and my family shops there. Excuse me, and we haven't, it just hasn't been the numbers. It's back in a really safe place to shop.
Well, if you've already done the report, then there's no reason to do another one.
What I'll do is, next meeting, I'll bring in, I'll just run the report again, and I'll have numbers for you, so I can give you exact everything.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, no problem.
And I will say for the traffic side of things, just to comment on that, is that I think the good work that Merrill did with designing that, those roadways leading into Costco, making sure that we continued the lanes from over Highway 80 into the Costco. It has been successful. The traffic seems to flow, I mean, I monitor that stuff. It's my, I'm kind of a nerd when it comes to that, like I do at schools. I'll do the same thing at Costco. And it is a really, I think, well-functioning intersection and area for us that we do have a lot of cars, but we get a lot of cars through there. The partnership with Rockland, because our borders are very close at that point, has been very good, too. So I mean, you know, it's a good job done by all of us.
Because it feels like there hasn't been a lot of traffic, but it's nice to know that there's data to prove that there hasn't been, not necessarily a lot of traffic, but it feels like there hasn't been a lot of congestion because of it, and it's nice to know that there's data.
In traffic collision, they happen, of course. People are on their phones, distracted, they rear each other. For the most part, I think that it flows very, and I see a lot of people shaking their heads like, yeah, I drive through there, and it seems to flow very well.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, hold on.
So you mentioned Smithville, and your agency's going to be there? Is there other agencies going to be there for coffee?
I believe the Fire Department's going to be there. I believe CHP's going to be there. That's at least the plan right now. Obviously, we're always one critical incident away from plans changing, unfortunately, in our business, but that's the plan right now.
Yeah, I heard about that. I think it's going to be wonderful. Thank you for doing that.
So I was reached out by the organizers of this.
Okay.
We want to do one in the town of Loomis.
Okay.
You know.
I heard.
And I'm like, okay, I'm on this, let's do this.
That's awesome.
Let's rope in local business, and this function, we did it in Granite Bay. So they've kind of traveled around different areas, trying to do the public safety coffee. And we've had great success in the previous ones. I know Chief Duer hosted us at the last one, the one before that. It was at another coffee shop in Granite Bay. But a lot of citizens came out, there was a lot of questions. We got to interact, you know.
That's great.
And Loomis, we kind of take that for granted. You can contact us anytime and have access to us in some other communities. It's not, you know, the same, so.
Excellent.
I think we're the pinnacle of having that connection and that interaction, very open and, you know, honest, so.
Well, it sounds like they reached out to the right guy. Excellent, thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, and finally, we have the UC Master Gardeners.
Good evening. Wait till she gets the slide up here. I think we're going to start by talking about our seed swap that we had on the 25th. And it was tremendously successful. We had about 125 people come out for that. And we had a lot of really positive comments, both during the event and on Facebook following the event. We've been following to see what people said. And so I think that one that comes to mind that I think might be of interest to you would be just that this was a local person who came to the seed swap and said they had a great time, they learned a lot, met some new friends, and found some new interesting people to talk to. So it was really, it was really very well received. We'll do it again next year, so it's always on the last Saturday of January. And we're going to expand it next year, because we had one of the members of the Horton Farm came and said that they wanted to bring a bunch of stuff next year. We had some scions that we, that's a cutting of a tree that you can graft onto another tree. So we're going to expand a little bit next year, but it was really, really popular. So hopefully, you'll hear some good things about that, too. We had our initial site visit at the fire station over here. And I don't know, we wrote down 20, but I don't know if that's the right number or not. But we had our initial, so you might remember that we were looking for locations in town where we could kind of do more, at your request, actually, Mayor Ring. Kind of more, started as a California native thing. But we talked to the fire station, and Mark's been amazingly generous with his time and wanting to get involved in this. And it's kind of now gotten to the point where we're just, in the very beginning phases, we had our initial site review. But we're really looking now at making it more, not just California natives, but firescaping, and kind of showing some examples of how to fire scape your property. And I will tell you that we had our second Saturday, this last Saturday at the library, and I had two separate Loomis couples, they both lived here, who came up and asked me where they could find information about firescaping and planting that would protect their structures. So I think that this is a really timely topic, which I've said before, but I think that that really drove that home. So we're looking forward to that. It's going to be a long process. PCWA, we did our initial site review with about eight, I think we outnumbered the fire captain and chief by eight to one. But we did our initial review and started talking about what we're going to do. PCWA has come out, and they are going to provide, if not from their own funds, they're going to go out and solicit for donations for all of whatever's needed for the irrigation. So we're working towards making this something that is really doable, an educational area for the community to come out and be able to see kind of what can be done, and something also that'll beautify that space. So more to come on that. Our fountain, which we talked about last time, is operational. So if you haven't been out there, you can go out, take a look. The birds are loving it. We actually had, get to the numbers, we actually had a really good January. So we had 550 visitors in the garden total, which brings our annual total to 3,776. So almost, I think we'll hit 4,000 before we hit our one-year mark, so that would be really nice. We had a couple of special events. We did an educational session. And we don't, the Master Gardener spent 191 hours in the garden in January. Now, that might not sound like a lot, and it really isn't, because if any of you garden at all, you know there isn't a lot to do in January, so we kind of took the month off. So there's some pictures in the middle there of the seed swaps, some close-ups of the actual seeds being swapped. And then just kind of an overall shot to give you an idea of how the room was set up. We had it at the vets' hall, and how many people came out for that, so. Upcoming activities, on the 8th, we're having a workshop at the Loomis Library, as I think Sarah mentioned, it's preparing your garden for spring. And then we're going to follow that up in the garden with an actual build-your-own-garden bed. So we'll actually do a hands-on demonstration, and folks can get out and kind of see how to put together a raised garden bed. And then on the 15th of March, we have what we call Kids in the Garden. So we applied for, and one, I think I mentioned this before, we applied for and won a grant from the California Native Plant Society. So we have been inviting kids into the garden, and they get a journal, and they get a bookbag, and they get colored pencils, and we teach them about California natives, and we teach them about nature journaling. So we have another session by the time we hit the end of April, beginning of March, we'll put about 190 kids through that program, plus the parents and whoever comes with them. So that's pretty exciting, too, so. And there is a picture of, actually, that's my husband building the raised bed in the garden. So that's kind of just a synopsis of what happened. Last one, when we got going on the next few weeks, are there any questions?
Thank you very much for all of that, yeah. All right. Now is the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the council on subjects that are not already on the agenda. Each speaker is allowed three minutes of time. The audience should be aware that the council may not discuss details or vote on any non-agenda items. However, we may refer your concerns to staff or ask that an item be placed on a future agenda. So does anybody in the audience have any items for, any comments on items not on the agenda?
Hi, I'm Sandy Richards, and I spoke for your behalf of Loomis A. Carter, but now I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a resident in the community of Loomis. Just listening to some of the presentations, I was wondering if the town of Loomis has considered implementing a volunteer program? And the reason why I ask is because I'm listening to so many other things that are going on around here, people in their organizations can use volunteers. I worked for a city and retired for three different cities, 30 years. And about five years ago, I retired, but I ran a volunteer program for one of the cities, and we had 60 volunteers. With such a small town and small staff like we had, we used volunteers to do quite a bit of work around the town, and it worked out really, really well. So I'm listening to in-motoring drivers, leading drivers for seniors, a lot of things that the police department does, volunteers could help with. And so I'm kind of a proactive person myself, and I thought that was something that I did where I came from, and I just wonder, has anybody had that here ever? And I've only been in the town for about 10 years. And is it something maybe that the council would be interested in getting more information on?
I believe that, I mean, I've brought this up in the past with Wes, and he's acted on it as much as I know. But I don't know that we have a list of volunteers. I would very much welcome you doing that. But I don't know, whatever the town can do to facilitate that, I think would be awesome. Yeah.
Well, I can do a presentation and bring more information. I kind of don't want to volunteer too much.
Right.
I can certainly, you know, provide a path on how I run the program. I did it for 13 years, pretty successful. One of the cities that I came from did not support volunteers, which is kind of interesting. And so it's a culture, I think, with cities, and so that's why I ask, because if the city doesn't support it, then the culture, it doesn't work.
Right.
The next city that I worked for was very supportive and had a lot of work done. And in addition to that, I also believe that it brings the community together and to be proactive if you're asking the people to help you.
Right. I don't know if you reach out to Wes, probably is the right way to go, and then he'll. Sounds good. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else have any public comment? No, anybody online? No, all right, then I'm going to close public comment. Now is the time to comment, the opportunity to comment on the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion unless an audience member or a council member requests otherwise. Does anybody want to pull anything on the council? No, okay.
I want to pull something.
I want to pull something, but only just to kind of highlight it. It's some really good work, and so I don't know if I should just do it at the end?
You got to pull it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You want to talk about it? Which one's item is that?
Yeah, item five, please.
Okay, so you'd like to pull item five off consent. Anybody else up here? No, no. Anybody in the audience, any concerns about the consent agenda? No, anybody online? No, okay. So item five is pulled, can I get a motion for the other items?
I move to approve items one through four and items six through nine. Is it nine? Because the other two aren't.
Correct, nine is the last one.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item five.
Okay, I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention, because Richard, our town engineer, went ahead and is putting street closure restrictions. And there's a list on this staff report of the dates that he will be implementing that. And this is to support our local businesses and minimize the impact of shoppers in retail to ensure smooth traffic flow. And I just think that was really great work of him to do, and I wanted to thank him for that, but also let the businesses know that, you know, he has gone ahead and put those dates out. And so I think we'll have it, how will the public know or the businesses know these dates? Will it be on our website, or?
I think Richard and I will work on those details. We may actually even set up meetings with the businesses downtown.
Anyway, Richard, thank you very much for doing that. Appreciate it.
So Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, I just want to point a clarification, because Mayor Ring actually asked this in our 101 today, is this for all things? Or is it just for projects? And just want to be clear, this is kind of a blackout dates for projects that cannot occur during that timeframe. This is not anything to do with the usual events that happen downtown.
Yeah, the reason I brought it up was because the day before Thanksgiving Parade falls right in there, and I wanted to make sure that we were allotting the town to be able to close it down if we needed to for fun items like parades.
And I also want to support what you said, Jen. I mean, I really appreciate Richard hearing the situation from the businesses and taking the lead and making this happen. It was wonderful.
Yeah, thank you, Richard.
All right, does anybody in the public have any comments on item five? No, I see none. Anybody online? Okay, can I get a motion for item five?
I'll make a motion for item five.
I'll second.
To approve item five?
To approve item five.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second to approve item five. Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Moving on, now we have our first item of business, which is the mid-year financial update.
So I know as Ted's walking up here, this is the long-awaited mid-year budget review. I know everybody's been anxious to know kind of how we've been financially. We've had some rough moments in the finance world and kind of transition of teams and all those things. And I'm happy to report tonight that Ted has done an amazing job of putting, you know, our mid-year budget review together for council to discuss. And I'm not going to steal thunder what he's going to talk about, so. We'll leave it at that.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So the, yeah, this is a mid-year financial report, it's not technically mid-year, it's through January. And there's a reason for that, which I'll explain in a minute. But I'll give you the punchline now, which is basically that the town is performing its budgets, both revenue and expense, and across all funds. So there is no action item for the council tonight, no resolution for asking for any original appropriations, nothing of that sort. I've written, my staff report has some commentary on some items that I thought needed explaining. I'm going to cover most of those, I'll cover what I think the high points are in my presentation, and then I'll just wait for council's questions to kind of fill in the gaps for you all. So we have an impromptu PowerPoint put together, which is basically just the same charts that are in my staff report, nothing else additional. I'll start with the general fund. And again, these are all numbers through January, the end of January. So it's seven months, which is 58% of the year. So keep the number in mind when you're kind of looking at things. Relate 58%, and I'm going to explain to you why that doesn't work all the time when you're looking at revenue. So first, with property tax, one of the reasons I wanted to wait until this month to do the mid-year is because we received our property tax, our first property tax payment in January. So we received that, and it's very close to budget, as the chart displays. It's not really a surprise, property tax is very stable and usually gets pretty close to budget. Now, what you're all really curious about is sales tax, right? Sales and use tax, transactions tax. And to date, we have five months of payments in, but I need to tell you that property tax is actually paid by due quarter. The first two months of a quarter are just in advance, you get from the state. And by design, they are less than one-third of a quarter, okay? So even though you look at this and you'll say it's 35% or 37% of budget, that's actually not a problem. The reason is, when we get our next payment at the end of February, which will be for the month of December, and therefore for the fourth quarter of the year, the second fiscal quarter. I expect that payment to be large enough to bring us to 50% of budget per year. I skipped apart, I wanted to explain this chart to make sure everybody understands all the columns, because there's a lot going on. The first column is just the revenue type. The second column is the budget for the full year. The next column, year-to-date actual, is what we've actually brought in year-to-date. The column next to it, year-to-date budget, is the percentage of the budget that pertains to the year, the part of the year that we've covered so far. So basically, that column is 58% of the full-year budget column. The column next to it is just a percentage calculation of what we've actually brought in versus the full-year budget. So if anything on that column that's close to 58%, shows you you're on target. If it's less than that, I'll explain why. For example, I just did with sales tax, explain why it's less than 58%. For example, I just did with sales tax, explained why it's less than fifty-eight percent. Property year-to-date is where we were in January of 2024. So you can use that to compare it to the year-to-date actual column to see if we're consistent with how it normally goes through the year in terms of the revenue streams, or if we're behind something. And then the last column just compares last year's first seven months to this year's first seven, in dollars. So there's that. Now, I've just explained sales tax and transaction tax, along with property tax, those are our big items. The other items I'll point out are franchise fees, which if you look at the chart, it's seventeen percent of budget. That's actually not a problem, because our franchise fees are back-end loaded, and they usually come in later in the fiscal year. And if you look at the year-ago column, it'll tell you the same thing happened last year. So that's fine, it's just, the biggest one is PG&E, and they pay it all night. The other things I want to point out are licenses and permits, that is a very uneven and unpredictable revenue source, but we are at almost eighty percent of budget for the year, so I think that's good. And the other agencies line is actually a derivative of property tax, because our property tax in lieu of ordinary vehicle sales, it just happens to be in a different category, but it lines up with property tax and is actually pretty stable. I can continue to go on, or I can answer questions as we go, it's up to you.
I say just power through, and we'll ask questions at the end.
All right, so let's go to general fund expenses. General fund expenses are overall at forty-eight percent of budget year-to-date. Expenses are generally straight-lined throughout the year, not entirely, but generally straight-lined throughout the year. So being at forty-eight percent of budget through seven months is actually pretty positive. And I really don't have anything else to say about that for now, so we can go on. Okay, now I'm going to get out of the general fund, and again, just to conclude, our forecast is that general fund will achieve budget revenues and will stay within budget expenses. So the base case is that we will have a balanced budget in the general fund for the year. Balanced budget for the year. Okay, so now I'm going to move off general fund and on to some different funds. Streets and Roads Fund, this is where our gas tax comes in, and it's also where our allocation from PCTPA comes into. And when you look at, you see year-to-date, we're on less than twenty percent, there's a reason for that, and that is because we haven't received our annual allocation from PCTPA yet. And in fact, in our next meeting, we'll probably bring to you a resolution approving the request for our funding, that we can then take to the PCTPA board for their approval, and then we'll receive our allocation for the year. But that's all sort of the normal process. Our gas tax in and of itself is forecasted to come in very close to budget. We get a forecast from a consultant who's basically looks at revenues across the state, and he forecasts our gas tax revenue for the whole state, and he says we'll be close to budget. On the expense side, we use the expenses in those funds to maintain roads and also for capital projects, both. And so the expenses are a little low right now, because we haven't really done this in projects. Once we get our allocation in, then we can fund some projects, but our regular road maintenance is kind of ongoing on schedule. Okay? The next set of funds I want to cover, now it gets kind of boring, actually, to the Development Impact Fee Funds, and these are revenues that we get from developers for impact fees, and that money is only spent when there is a project that is eligible to be split by these funds, which is kind of restricted. So normally, the way these funds work is that money comes in slowly and accumulates, so it gets to a big balance, and then we have a big project, and it all drains out. And so that's the mode we're in now. For example, if you look at the Road Circulation Fund, you can see that balance, well, we do our major projects like the Horseshoe Bar Interchange, the town's portion will come from this fund. So you'll see it all kind of run out pretty quickly when the time comes. And then, not quite finally, yeah, almost finally. We have the Maintenance District Funds, we have a bunch of small maintenance districts around town. This money is collected as part of the property tax, through the property tax, and the same thing, we basically collect money until there's a project to be done in the district, and we use these funds to perform those projects on the streets or the curbs or whatever is in that district that is covered by the district fees. So that's it for, everything except for capital. My last chart is for capital, and what it is, is basically kind of an update on all of the capital projects that are either budgeted to have some activity in the fiscal year or have had some activity in the fiscal year. And what you'll see is the project, the full budget for the project, the amount of money that's been spent on that project year-to-date, the remaining balance, and then the status, if it's ongoing or if the project is complete. I want to point out that you'll probably notice that there are three projects with negative balances. We want to make sure, because these have just either wrapping up or just recently wrapped up, we want to go back and make sure that all the accounting on these projects is correct, and that we've got all the expenses in the right places, and if need be, we will come back and ask for an appropriation to zero out these projects before the end of the fiscal year, just to clean it up. But I want to go through it and make sure that we've got all the accounting correct on those. So that is my presentation, and I am ready to answer any questions. Let me have.
Thank you for doing that. It was funny that you mentioned halfway through that the boring part was coming. We're not there yet? Oh, okay. And I'm a numbered person, right? So, but I appreciate it.
Well, actually, in this case, boring is good, so.
That's, totally agree. I guess my one comment is that we're still looking for software updates, and I'm hoping that this becomes a more frequent type of, like, we get a report more often, not necessarily this detailed, but at least like a quarterly report, once we get the better updates, better software installed.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I just want to comment that I appreciate your report. You are an excellent speaker as well, and I like how you write, because, you know, not only do we read this, the public reads this, and it is a subject that can be very complicated, and I really appreciate your delivery and your thoroughness, so thank you.
Thank you.
You got anything?
I just wanted to say, I tend to be visual, so I thought it was very fascinating, the part, and I'm sure the audience probably will too, where you showed all of the projects by street or neighborhood. I saw my own neighborhood, and I was very amazed that, oh, that's how much goes for, you know, property tax, that sort of thing. So I think that that's, again, not to copy her, but very thorough, and I think that's a great avenue to have in the budget, to show projects by neighborhood or city, and how much they actually are, how much we're getting from them, so I wanted to applaud you on that, because that was pretty cool to see.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do we have to?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, yeah, yeah. But do we need, is there an action we need to take on this? Okay, all right. Let's open it up for public comment. Does anybody in the public have anything they would like to ask? Look at, see none? Anybody online? Oh, we do have one, okay.
Go ahead, Pam.
I have a quick question on the gas tax. So the gas tax we get from that lone Shell gas station on Taylor Road, is that what he's referring to for the gas tax?
Town, yeah.
Okay, just one clarification, thank you very much.
Anybody else online? Nope. So I actually thought the gas tax works differently. Is it, it's based on the number of gas stations that you have in town?
Well, it's just based on, well, there are, actually, this could turn to a rabbit hole.
There's multiple different gas taxes, I must say.
Yes, there are five different gas taxes.
Yeah, I was, SB one, the VMT and all of those things, but you're talking about our actual revenue from our.
From taxes on gasoline.
That is, that is including the sales tax, which you're thinking of, but the gas tax, there are actually five different types, and so to explain each one of the five would...
Another day?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're interested in that.
I am not. But maybe, I don't, I don't think we need that, but yeah. Anybody else online? I think we said no? Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you so much, Ted.
Thank you, Ted.
All right. And as you said, there's no required motion and interaction, because it's just receive and file. Okay. All right, the last item is the California Cities for Local Control Support Request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was asked, we put on the agenda by Mayor Ring on there, and this item is to a resolution of support due to requests for more local control for cities for their land use, control, and zoning on there. With this, I'm going to turn this back over to Mayor Ring to kind of talk in detail to the item and have discussion and direction, please.
All right. So I don't recall as, before I was mayor, getting a lot of requests, but I feel like since I've been mayor, and it's only been two months, I feel like I get all of these emails asking me to support one thing or another, and I usually do, I try to do my best to research it before I even give it to Wes, and so even the ones that you're seeing is a small portion of what I'm actually getting. And I know, I read through the resolution, I know it's mostly symbolic, but I think that the erosion of local control is something that we continue to discuss as a council, and it just made sense to bring this forward to all of you. And as much as we fight with the political left, the political right, and we fight over all these specific issues, but I think that we, I know that we have a lot more in common than we have differences, and I think this is one of those issues that we all can kind of agree, I feel like we can all agree on, but I would like to hear your opinion on it. I don't have a lot of answers, but I can answer any questions if you have them. Did you, I'm assuming you all read through it. Does anybody have any questions on it? Comments? All right. That's, that was awesome, I should do this more often. Does anybody in the public have any comments on the resolution? Okay, anybody in, online? We do, okay.
Go ahead, Miguel.
Right, you got your pitch, Loomis. I totally agree with Mayor Ring and this idea, as we've all seen, the local control has totally eroded. The state of California has decided our land use and many other things, and I'm surprised that the communities haven't really gotten together to oppose this, and so I would strongly support this resolution. That's all.
Thanks, Miguel. Anybody else? Online? No? Okay. We'll close public comment. Does anybody have anything else to add? Want to make a motion?
No, looking at the list, a lot of our bordering cities have, it looks like a majority of their council has come on, and I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and accept this resolution.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Just to confirm, that's a motion to approve the resolution? Yes.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Do we need to do, I feel like we should do roll call, just because that way we can, because on their website, they have, you know, specific council members who, so if you could, Carol, please.
Just confirming, Amanda, did you make the motion?
No.
Jen, okay. Councilmember Clark Quetz?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Aye.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Mayor Ring?
Yes. All right, passes. Okay. Thank you all. Appreciate that. Now we move on to council committee reports. Does anybody, you usually start at your end, do you want to go? Do you have anything, Amanda?
Yeah, I don't have anything. Our economic one got rescheduled, so that's coming up, and then, yeah, there's really nothing to report this time.
Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to say that I am happy to be your Secog representative, and I have gone down to Sacramento, hitched the wagon, and gone down to the big city twice. I'm on the Land Use Subcommittee, and it was really nice to connect with people that I was able to serve with before. And then also, we had our first economic development meeting with the Loomis, with the chamber as well. So just wanted to let people know we are actively getting involved with all these subcommittees and looking forward to working for you.
All right. I'm just going to continue, okay? So with Pioneer, I just wanted to let everybody know that we did vote on a rate increase, a small one, I think it's less than one percent, for the follow-up, for this next year, but it's, is still less than PG&E, and so if you are still not using Pioneer, I don't understand, monetarily, I don't understand why. You're always going to save money, as far as I know, you're always going to save money with Pioneer. But the schools, they are celebrating their one-hundredth day of the school year just recently. They are expand, their transitional kindergarten program is growing, so I guess we're getting a lot of younger families moving into their area, at least into the school district, which is nice. So they're adding more space. The Charter School on Bankhead and Sierra College is still moving forward, no timeline on that yet, though. And they are hosting a One Pill Can Kill event highlighting the dangers of fentanyl at H. Clark Powers on February nineteenth at 6:00 PM. The district attorney, Placer District Attorney Morgan Guyer will be there, so if you haven't heard of that yet, shame on you, because Stephanie's been screaming about it, rightfully so, same thing with the district attorney, very important. And then lastly, I have my meeting with the mayor meeting this past Saturday. I want to say thank you to Cheryl Benson for posting about it on social media. It keeps getting bigger, I'm worried that I'm going to have to move it somewhere else, but we'll see. If the next meeting is March eighth, it's the Saturday before the council meeting, from ten to noon at the library, and if you need to contact me for anything other reason, you feel free to email me, I'm always open to getting emails. And that's all I have.
Nothing to report?
No.
So briefly, we're looking forward to our next public safety meeting, which is going to be very exciting. We'll report on that the next meeting, I'm sure we'll have a lot to report on. So funny, oddly enough, and this is why I'm mentioning this, that you mentioned One Pill Can Kill, and I'm going to make an effort to be able to be there at that time, is on the twentieth, which is the next day, they're having a signing and a briefing at Santucci, so I'm going to that. Oh, sorry. I'm sharing the mic with Danny, so I apologize if I'm, like, far away, my mic doesn't work, so. And then I've been going to LAFCO meetings, obviously, we have one on the nineteenth, I guess they have a holiday on Wednesday, so they actually pushed our meeting to next Wednesday. It's usually the second Wednesday of every month, and I met with Fire Chief Gao, had coffee with him, and discussed collaboration to make sure, because they're actually going to be on the, their MSR is coming up with all the different fire, you know, and looking for a plan to make sure that they're all included and no fire stations get closed, so I met with him regarding that. Also, want to do a collaborative meeting with the town, and our wonderful Fire Chief back here, and Fire Chief Gao, actually, he wanted to meet with him, so I'm trying to put that together, and he wanted to meet Wes, so that's kind of coming up in the future, and I'm also helping Wes, and we had a tour regarding our MSR that's coming up, which was very fascinating, if he wants to kind of go into more detail, he can, but that was a fun day, that was, I'm blanking here, because the week was kind of crazy, was it last week or was it the week before? Help me. I think it was last week, but yeah, it was a whole day where we took Amanda Ross around Loomis and gave her a tour of what Loomis does and our inner workings, and I learned a lot, but that, still, with LAFCO as well, because we're going to be actually doing our Loomis MSR, so with that, I'll stop gabbing and I'll give it back to the mayor here.
All right, I think that is the end of our agenda. If there's nothing else, then I'm going to adjourn this morning, eight-twenty.
Let's go to the gym now, work closes.
Go to the gym.